I now declare that the Plano City Council preliminary open meeting is reconvened in an open session, that all council members are present. Councilmember Rick Adeli will be on Zoom. Our first item on the preliminary agenda is consideration and action resulting from the executive session. Next item is discussion and direction regarding the request for extension of line of duty leave. Chief?
What side are you on, Brian? All right. Thank you. This is Brian Shel- firefighter Brian Shelton. And on January the thirtieth, 2024, he was carrying a bundle of hose upstairs, and the hose got hung up, wound up injuring his shoulder as a result of that. Went through the normal rehab process, and his shoulder wasn't right, so he wound up having a second shoulder surgery. His first shoulder surgery was on March twenty-second, 2024. He had a second one on September twenty-fifth, 2024. Same thing again, the shoulder still wasn't right, and wound up having to have a third shoulder surgery as a result of that, and that was on February fifth, 2025. And so, coming up on in on March twenty-second, that will be one year since the original surgery. And so, according to Civil Service 143073, we get we've given him full full pay for that initial year there. And our request is that we extend that a second year. And the same SOP, I mean, Local Government Code 143073B, it says that that you have the ability to extend that for for one year, which would be the equivalent of making up the thirty percent difference between what workers' comp was already going to give him for this coming year and and what would need what we'd need to make it a hundred percent. I'm happy to answer any any questions about it.
Any questions? Brian, I hope you heal up and and do well. Sorry, it's been so long, but we wish you the best.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the extension.
Okay, I'll second that. We're gonna do a hand vote? Is that okay? Oh, okay, there we go. So I have a motion, a second, to extend the line of duty for Brian Shelton. Please vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next item is a comprehensive monthly financial report. Denise Stucky?
Good evening. Seems like I was just here giving you September's report, so now I'm here for December. You move them for me? Okay, thank you. All right, this slide represents revenues compared to the budget by fund. The General Fund has revenues of one hundred and three point four million for the first quarter of the fiscal year. This represents twenty-nine point four percent of the total annual budget. The Water and Sewer Fund has sixty-one point three million in revenues, which represents twenty-five point six of the total annual This slide represents our expenditures compared to budget by fund. The General Fund has expenditures of eighty-one point nine million for the first quarter of the fiscal year. That represents twenty-three point four percent of the total annual budget. And the Water Sewer Water and Sewer Fund has expenditures of thirty-nine point two million, which represents twenty-one point eight percent of the total annual budget. This slide represents our net change in fund balance for the past three years. In the General Fund, for the first quarter of the fiscal year, the fund balance has increased by seventeen point one million. As you can see, this is more than favorable than it's been in the last couple of years. And then the Water and Sewer Fund balance has increased by eight point four million, and this is also more favorable. So we're trending pretty well in both of those funds. When we look at our actuals compared to the prior year, our General Fund revenues are higher in the first quarter by twelve point three million. There was an increase in property tax revenue of nine million. This is followed by an increase in sales tax of three point two million over the first quarter of the prior fiscal year. We also saw an increase in licenses and permits over the prior first quarter by one point two million. And our General Fund expenditures are lower than the first quarter of the prior year by one point six million. Personnel costs decreased by five hundred and ninety-one thousand. This was due to the hiring freeze that we put in place for the first quarter of the fiscal year. And we also had materials and supplies decrease by nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and it's because of the cost-cutting measures that we have put in The Health Claims Fund had a decrease in fund balance of about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. This is trending better than the first quarter of the prior fiscal year, which saw a decrease in fund balance of six hundred and eight thousand. Our unemployment rates in December were at three point two percent. This is down from the three point six percent they were in September. And our sales tax for the month of November were up compared to the prior year. You're good. Our sales tax for the month of November were up compared to the prior year by three point three eight percent. On our real estate market recap, we show the number of days on the market was thirty-two days in September, which rose to forty-seven days in December. So pretty substantial increase for days on market. The percentage of asking was ninety-eight point one percent in September, and that decreased in December to ninety-seven percent. The median selling price for a home in Plano was five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in December. This is up compared to the five hundred and nineteen thousand that we had in September. The price per square foot in December was two twenty-five, which is the same as it was in September. Hotel occupancy tax is up by eighteen thousand compared to the prior fiscal year. And then this is our equity and treasury pool. Of course, the largest portion is always capital projects. We'll be selling, we'll be issuing some more debt, and so that that will become a greater portion as in June when we get the proceeds from the bonds. In our portfolio maturities, as you can see, we have a lot of liquidity at forty-two point eight percent in the zero-to-one-year category. Right now, with the interest rates the way they are, we can leave that money in there for a little bit and pick up a little bit of yield, but we need to be cautious to continue the way that we ladder our cash. And then this is our portfolio diversification. As you can see, we're very diversified, and we we like to see that so that all your risk isn't in one place. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Denise? All right. Our next item is sales tax sourcing. Doug?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Doug McDonald, Director of Economic Development, and also have Andrew Fortune here, Government Relations, in case there's any questions related to sales tax and current legislation. But tonight, I want to talk to you a little bit about these two tools that we have in our toolbox that we're able to utilize for sales tax. As you all remember, about two years ago, we worked their process to adopt a new policy statement for economic development incentives. The policy statement does not get into the specifics of tools that we use, but it does give us that framework for how we utilize the incentive program here in the city of Plano. As part of a separate process, we've been doing the Fiscal Roadmap Initiative you all are very familiar with, to identify new revenue sources. And we've identified two staff sources from economic development standpoint, incentive tools that may be able to be used for future projects. We don't need to amend the current policy to add these in there, but this is something we can be considered on a case-by-case basis when we bring projects before you during executive session. The two projects are two tools we really want to present to you tonight. One is the separated materials sales tax. This is related to new construction and the construction materials, sales tax related to new construction materials. The second is sales tax sourcing for individual businesses. Council, these are tools that our neighboring cities and cities all across Texas utilize today that we can tap into. These two tools are also the intended use is to bring new revenue sources that we're not collecting today. So both of these will be tools that we can implement that could look at revenue sources that we're not able to collect to those today as part of an economic development agreement. So Council, separated materials sales tax, so kind of describing this, this is during the construction process, a company can choose to work with the Texas Comptroller's Office and the city to source the sales tax for construction materials to a specific city. So through a material sales tax agreement that we may have with the company, the city can collect sales tax revenue off the construction materials as part of this economic development incentive. So kind of how it works, a new building's being constructed in Plano, and they are sourcing materials like wood and steel from outside of Plano. Instead of paying the sales tax to the outside entity, the contractor provides a resale certificate to the entity, which allows it to be tax-exempt. At that point, the contractor is really treated as a retailer, and they then charge, collect, and report the sales tax at the job site here in Plano, designating Plano as the source for that sales tax for the construction materials. So again, this is a way for us specifically with new construction projects, that we can collect sales tax on the construction materials that we're not collecting today on on bigger This is kind of more of a visual showing kind of the traditional approach. What we utilize primarily today is the contractor providing, buying the materials from a point-of-sale, so some other jurisdiction. With the materials-separated approach, the contractor will issue that sales certificate to the point-of-sale so that no sales tax is collected at that jurisdiction. The contractor then brings that sales tax certificate back here to the city of Plano to be able to collect that here in the city of Plano. What this does, though, I tell you, is the 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 burden really, back to work, the burden really on this approach is on the contractor and on the Texas Comptroller's Office to handle that administration of the process, handling the administration of the sourcing of the materials. The heavy lift, because it's on the contractor, what we can do to help incentivize that is actually do a split between the contractor with the company to provide some of that sales tax back to them as part of a rebate. So again, this is this is not construction, this is not sales tax that we're collecting today on new construction materials, but if we were to be able to collect those, to be able to kind of provide some relief for the administration burden of those, the administration side of things. We do have the ability, as part of our economic development impacts that we provide to you all, to take a look at this specific line item, to show you what the projected increase on sales tax could be related to the new construction that y'all could take in for consideration. So Council, I'm gonna pause right here before I get into the second tool to see if you have any questions related to the sourcing for new construction sales tax.
Councilmember Horn?
Thank you. A couple of things here, just for clarification. When you say new construction, is that also, say, reconstruction of existing facilities, like new fit-out, et cetera?
So what what we would have been told from contractors and from the state is that generally when there's a kind of renovation, like a second generation of a use, a lot of times that is required by the state is to actually source that locally. So we do collect some of that sales tax. This is really for new construction. New construction, like let's say if we're building a new hotel or a new office building, that's when this tool really comes into play, because that does not require to be sourced through the city of Plano.
Okay, the second one is tied to the new construction, particularly when you're talking about materials. And a lot of times, the materials that we are, the constructor is acquiring is from out of state.
Correct.
Do you think there'll be pushback from the controllers from the other states who are not realizing their sales tax because we're basically pulling that into our little city?
Correct. And that's, some states will recognize our sales tax, some will not. So it may not be applicable for all states, wherever they're they're sourcing their materials. I'll tell you, Council, this is something that could be happening to us that we're just not aware of, that materials are being sourced out of Plano into other jurisdictions. So it is something to take in consideration that the cities, there could be potential loss of revenue in other cities. But again, that's something that we're also having to take in consideration of what could be potentially lost here in Plano.
Okay, so again, the same example, but say within the city or in the state of Texas, that we pull something from a small community that has a manufacturing facility that makes mechanical systems, okay? We pull that in here. That city's relying on the tax revenue from the sale of that, and it's a small city. Do you see there's going to be some conflict there between, you know, that perception of us pulling in that sales tax versus that small city realizing it?
You know, City Council, one of the things that, when you're looking at these projects, there's always an impact on Plano, and there could be also a negative impact on a neighboring city. We look at this from job creation, we look at it from corporations moving and coming here to Plano. I think this is one of those other aspects to take in consideration is that there is, there would be a sales tax loss in other jurisdictions that may be supplying those. I will say, this is a, one of the things we look at is, it's a, it's a Plano project, and so we want to try to capture as much revenue as possible on Plano projects. And you all see that when our impact assessment assessments we do. It's just another piece that we could take a look at of collecting additional revenue that's not, we're not being collecting today.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Doug. First question is, so recognizing that some construction materials are going to be subject to sales tax outside our jurisdiction normally, how much of construction materials are actually subject to sales tax? Is it all of them or a portion?
That question, I'm not sure I know the answer to, but I can get that response back to you.
Okay, that would be material, pun fully intended. And I gotta ask, would the separated materials sales tax be subject to the dart penny?
It would. So we would only have that one cent portion of it. So that's, that's another thing that we have not brought this tool to you to utilize is because it does have a smaller impact in a Plano jurisdiction than a non-DART member city. We do want to at least be able to put it on the table if there's projects we could take a look in consideration. I know there's projects we bring to you where they're really heavy on the impact of sales tax. I think this is where we could use some of these these tools to be able to minimize what we're having on our ED fund and using a different tool that we're, that is rebating what could be coming in as part of the project.
Okay. And I'm assuming that if a developer were to purchase the materials in Plano, that it would be a net neutral effect?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Yes. So are there any other cities who are currently using this tool to increase their sales tax revenue?
Yes, ma'am.
Are they our neighboring cities?
They, yes, yes, ma'am, they are. And there's, there's several cities here in North Texas that utilize this program. But yes, there's been recent projects recently that have mentioned the use of this tool for larger-scale new construction projects.
So we're not going to be the first one who's utilizing this method of trying to generate more revenue for our city, is that right?
No, ma'am, this is a tool that's been used here in North Texas quite a bit.
Thank you.
In fact, we're a little bit late to the game.
We're a little bit late, is that what you're saying?
We are, yes.
Okay. Real quick, next tool, a little bit simpler. This is looking at just individual sales tax sourcing for for companies. So a business that meets the Comptroller's rule of definition of a qualified place of business can choose their sales tax for both onsite and remote sales to the city, to the city of Plano. This is something we could look at as part of an incentive if we're a project here in Plano. A company here in Plano is looking to expand or to increase their potential sales tax. As y'all know, we're able to see the contributions of sales tax on our impact reports, that we may be able to say, hey, we'll do something here if we can ensure that the full sales tax of all your remote and onsite sales are actually coming to the city of Plano and not other jurisdictions. And so this is one that, you know, we are taking really close look at, really Andrew's side of things on Government Relations, to make sure that if this rule does change, because there have been several different iterations of this rule, that we're considerate in in making sure our agreements align for what the current law allows us to do. So again, this would be an example of a warehouse distribution center in Plano, having both their point-of-sales for onsite and remote businesses be coming here to the city of Plano. And then, Council, really, direction we're seeking tonight is just your interest in utilizing these tools. I know I have a follow-up question with with Councilmember Williams regarding the separated materials, but these are two tools, again, that can capture new sales tax revenue. They're tools being used by their neighboring cities. We do potentially need a partnership when we do implement these tools to actually encourage either the company or the contractor to actually go for that process, the administration process of sourcing those materials. And so when that does come up, we will bring it back to you on a case-by-case basis. When we do utilize this, we work really closely with our finance and budget departments, especially a sales tax sourcing that could be a one-time impact on our budget. We want to make sure that's not calculated in the future estimates of that potential project. We also may look into audit assistance as well to help out with the finance department. A lot of our neighboring cities utilize and outsource assistance to help out with the auditing of a lot of these receipts for the contractor. Council, I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, me again, Doug. Thank you. So for the sales tax sourcing, what qualifies as remote business? And here, I'm thinking of headquarters in Plano with retail operations throughout the state.
Yeah, and I'm gonna bring Andrew up here. I know there's been quite a bit of case law on this and discussions, particularly with, you know, does a, does a server and a data center count of collecting sales tax compared to an onsite physical business? I'm gonna let Andrew real quick to make inside question.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So with that particular question, it is, it has been a moving target. So the comptroller, if you could imagine, really does not prefer to work through these issues when he's doing the administration and collection of the sales tax. He sees it as a city-to-city issue, not a net benefit to the state. Currently, you would have, a great example would be a medical warehouse district that sells medical supplies, and those are distributed to hospitals all across the state. That facility would need to meet several criteria. One might be a call center where you have employees there at a desk taking calls and orders. Another might be contractors or sales reps from hospitals could walk in and place an order there. A simple warehouse or distribution center alone would not make the cut. But with that, you know, we would be working closely with the comptroller's office to make sure before any agreement was ever entered into that we establish what those lines were. And with all agreements like that, if no money is qualified to come in, we're not out any money either. But to echo his comments, you know, it's something that the state has used, cities across the state have used for decades. It's really an innovative tool, and when we talk about fiscal roadmap and ways that we can be more innovative as we're building out, it is something, it is a little bit of a city against city discussion. I know Deputy Mayor Proton, Homer and I were at a TML meeting where we discussed some of the evolution of this, but it has been the state at play and how business has moved in the state for a while. And so, I strongly recommend that the Council consider approving.
Thank you.
So Doug, and just for clarification, these would be just adding the tools to the toolbox. The the process for approval would still come back to Council as we typically do for our economic development agreement. So this would be something that, again, comes back as part of the consideration that Council looks at. So we expanded that toolbox. These are two tools that have been in use by other cities for a number of years. Again, so this is something that is widely used in the state from other cities. And so it's just adding the tools to the toolbox, and it still comes back to Council for their ultimate approval as part of our normal consideration.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Is everybody okay with adding these incentives into the toolbox? All right. Thanks, Doug. All right, next item is discussion and review of the twenty-five through twenty-twenty-nine five-year consolidated plan, proposed priority goals. Curtis?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Please excuse my voice as I'm trying to get over a little bug here. So I am here tonight to to go over, at least talk to you about our draft proposal for the new consolidation plan for the next five years. So as you're well aware of, one of the things that we do is we get grant funding from the federal government from HUD. We are going about it with the assumption that we are going to continue getting that funding. And we get CDBG funds approximately last year in about the amount of about one point five million, and also home funds in the amount of about six hundred thousand dollars. So the thing is, is these funds must be used to to put forward, to kind of follow one of the HUD objectives, one of three HUD objectives, and things like decent housing, suitable living environment, and expand economic development opportunities for low and moderate income persons. Just a little bit on how this works is CDBG funds have specific uses. As you can see, we can use approximately twenty percent of it for administrative costs, fifteen percent for public services, and then the remaining sixty-five percent for non-public services. On home funds, a little bit different, you can use the, up to ten percent for administrative costs, a minimum of fifteen percent for a chodo, and then other housing activities would be up to seventy-five percent. So the purpose of this consolidation plan, so one of the things we're looking at is this provides a framework by HUD for cities who are getting this sort of money to kind of come up and assess their needs. It also provides the ability to do some strategic planning. That way, you can use, you know, the data that that we get from HUD, because that that data comes from HUD, to make data-driven decisions on how you're going to use federal funds. Community engagement is part of this process, and so one of the things that the cities are encouraged to do is to reach out and make sure you get information and input from your citizens as to what they need, what are the needs of the community. And then also coordination of resources, because these are two different programs, and they've got two different, you know, rules and regulations on how they work. This is a way of providing a framework to hopefully work these these funds together. And then finally, accountability. So one of the things that we're looking at is, is every year, we come up with an action plan and a caper to tell you what our plan, what the plan is for these funds, get Council input, and then also come back at the end and let you know how we spent this fund, the the funds. So the timeline of this process, so as tonight, this is going to be your first chance to give input on what you believe that that these goals should be, based on the recommendations by staff here. In about six weeks, we'll come back with the final version for the required public hearing and adoption. In July, we'll have our our first action plan for year one. And then finally, the the whole process has to be, at least right now, completed by the middle of August. And some of the, you know, as we went through and looked at the data, you know, the the needs that Plano has are, you know, not new to anybody in this in this room. As you see, one of, of course, the issues that we have is is the age of our housing stock. So what we have here is a, the the blue represents homes or housing stock in Plano that have reached at least twenty-five years. So there's, they were at least built by 2000. And then on top of that, what we've, what we've laid over that is kind of a metric there to determine in those neighborhoods, how much of that population is low to moderate income. And if you look, the the green areas, you know, forty, basically forty-one to fifty-one percent of the residents in those areas are low to moderate income. As you hit that yellow, that goes up to fifty-one to sixty-nine percent, almost seventy percent. And then those, the very few areas that are gold there, seventy to one hundred percent of those people fall within that category of low to moderate income as defined by HUD. So in addition to the, you know, aging stock that we have, we also have cost burden. So, in addition to the, you know, aging stock that we have, we also have cost burden. So, this map kind of gives you an idea of those households that are paying, and the way HUD defines that is at least 30% of their income to housing, including, you know, whether it's mortgage, taxes, insurance, and if you hit at least the 30% level, you're considered cost burdened by HUD. So, the lighter shade areas, they are, those areas are paying at least, or less than 30%. And as the scale dark gets more dark, the dark blue, you see how many people are paying a much greater portion of their monthly income towards housing costs. And then affordable rental supply, one of the things that we certainly see, if you look at the far left and the center graphic here, we have almost 9,000, got about a little over 3,000 units available, and you have over 9,000 residents that fall at least below the annual median income of 50% or less, or area median income, I'm sorry. So, those are some of the needs that the data is showing, that we get from HUD. And like I said, in addition to that, one of the things that we do is we reach out to the citizens and get community input as to what we need. So, the way we've done this is we've had focus groups with some of our nonprofit partners. We've had public meetings, we've done online surveys, and also sent out postcards for those people that like the old way of doing things. As far as the, let me go back here, as far as the social services aspect, you know, what we've done is we've talked to the Collin County Homeless Coalition, got input from them. Other groups that involve other social service areas, sectors here in Plano, and then we're in the process of working through Connect Plano, and within those groups, we've gotten feedback as to what we need here in Plano. And if you look at what the service providers, what their emphasis is on is affordable housing, shared-type housing, permanent supportive housing, income-based housing, tax credits, that sort of thing. Public services, homeless services, basic healthcare, money management, transportation is a big one, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Specialized case management, low-barrier systems, you know, one of the problems that they see is for people who are coming out of prison or have felonies or criminal backgrounds that can't get into housing or have other hurdles that they have to get over. Youth services, and then that public facilities and infrastructure portion, you know, resource center, homeless shelter, special needs shelters, and alternative shelters are some of the suggestions we got. So, going from the service providers over to the citizen responses, you know, we had almost 1,200 survey response and over 100 attendees at the meetings. And one of the things that we had, we had about a 54% increase in responses since we did this electronically. And you can see from the diagram there, kind of, we got a fairly decent representation throughout the city of Plano from people who responded. And as you can imagine, the responses from citizens are more home-centric. So, repair assistance, affordable rental housing, affordable homeownership opportunities, affordable housing for special needs population. The public services that came up, the themes that came up, included senior citizens, senior services, transportation services, youth, again, youth services is a combination, is one of the things we saw in both groups. Domestic violence, mental health continues to be a big issue. Also, public facilities and infrastructure, parks, playgrounds, streets, infrastructure, senior centers, resource centers. And then economic development, job training, small business loans, and job creation and retention were themes that came out of that survey. So, one of the things that we want to do is, we understood that council, over the past few years, has, in the last five-year plan, has had some issues with some of the goals that we had implemented to begin with that we were never able to obtain. You know, transportation is one of them, job readiness is another one. And so, you know, just through the process that we had, those were always goals that we weren't able to obtain. So, what we've tried to do is realign the goals that we are proposing for this consolidated plan to make sure that we can, with, you know, market, current market conditions, the housing issues that we are seeing here, and some of the other things that we are facing, that these goals are going to be achievable through either the city of Plano and/or its nonprofit partners. So, as you can see, we can show you the goals that we had last year and the proposed goals. So, including under decent housing, 68 housing units to rehab, repair, or reconstruct. Affordable housing units, we're going to look at doing two of those. Three first-time home buyers to assist with down payments. You know, one of the problems with our first-time home buyer program, that program provides classes for people who are looking at buying a house for the first time, kind of give them an understanding of what's going on with, how to deal with mortgages and credit and that sort of thing. But those people, like we had two last year, those people who qualified, you know, aren't able to get into a house, right? They're going to be, that house is going to be snatched up by somebody who's going to be offering more money. So, you know, just the economics is not working for that program. But we got, so we got limited down to three. Eight low-income households to provide affordable rental housing with tenant-based rental assistance, and then suitable living environment. So, to provide assistance to 350 individuals for homelessness prevention, 400 low and moderate income persons to be provided with various public services, those social services, to help 220 persons experiencing homelessness, to increase our emergency shelter beds by five, and then we are going to not have a goal with regards to transportation or to deal with job training. Now, that being said, that doesn't mean that we can't, at some point, reinstitute those goals. You know, we've got the Connect Plano process that we are going through, and we are communicating with nonprofits, and that may present opportunities in the future to at least help us assist in some of these needs that we have. And so, with that, I will take any questions you may have, council.
Thank you, Curtis. Any questions for Curtis? Oh, sorry, Sheldon. There we go. Go ahead, Sheldon.
Thank you, Curtis.
Yes, sir.
A couple of things. In the metrics we're looking at for 2025 to '29, it looks like the targets for everything are lower except specifically for people experiencing homelessness, receiving overnight shelter or support services. Is that a result of inflation impacting us in '25 to '29?
Inflation costs, and also capacity of our nonprofits to do some of the things that we're requesting of them.
Okay. Personally, I would like to see as much of the funds for both CDGB and home going toward homelessness prevention. I'm not in favor of construction, reconstruction, or rehabilitation, except for critical repairs, things like foundation, which are kind of catastrophic expenses for a home for people who qualify, as well as like pipes, old pipes, that present a hazard and significant expenses. Overwhelmingly, prevention, and as, to the extent that our nonprofit partners are able to pick up the load, I would like to wisely choose them and strategically choose them to focus on what they do best, and likewise, provide the commensurate administrative fee for that, and minimize our own share of the administrative cost. I'm also not in favor of using funds for first-time home buyers, just because of the ripples that has in the market, where you're cutting somebody out who might be a first-time home buyer using their own funds. Same dynamic with providing that money and then being, likewise, having it taken away by somebody who can pay more in the current housing market. So, I would personally like to remove funds for first-time home buyers, but I think it is worthwhile to use some of these funds for education for first-time home buyers. And that, I'd see that along the lines of homelessness prevention as well, for people who may not be ready to get into a home yet.
Right. And for the education component, I mean, that's part of our regular budget process, though. We wouldn't expend additional funding on that. But yeah, it's been a successful program.
Well, to the extent that we can use the HUD funds, CDBG and home funds for the education, I'd rather free that up from the general fund. Thank you.
And I think what I'm, is we do use some of the administrative costs, some of the administrative funds from both CDBG and home funding, and that pays for the people who do the, to do the class. So, it is used. So, yep.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Prince, I'll get you, Anthony.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I noticed that you did decrease a lot of the goals, and then there were some that you just said, we're not going to do anything on that. Did you consider replacing some of those with a new goal, given that, based on the survey, I saw that there were some things that looked like they were priorities to our service partners or to our community that we're not addressing at all?
And I think when we, these goals are going to be obtained either through city staff for part of it, but a lot of it is going to come through our nonprofit partners. So, you know, we could look back and see what our nonprofits are doing. We are going through the application process right now for those that are going to be coming, you know, to be requesting funding, and we could certainly see if any of those, any of those nonprofits have the capability or capacity to do some of these other things. And we can bring that to you in our next meeting, if we're able to. So, and I hope I answered your question, because, you know, part of the problem is we don't know who's going to be funded yet by the CRC, so.
Councilmember Rick Adeli.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Curtis, for that excellent presentation and for all of the answers you've already provided. I did have some more questions, and, you know, I guess first I'll make a statement. Shockingly, I agree with what Councilmember Williams said. I'd like to take out the down payment assistance. I know in the responses that you sent to my email, Curtis, it looks like we had 66 individuals attend our first-time home buyer class, and we were able to approve two households for down payment assistance, but neither one was able to actually purchase due to market conditions. And so, I think that may be a program that's not actually, you know, able to help the people it's designed to help. And I think even if it does, you know, when we're looking at 66 individuals who showed up, you know, clearly having a need, even if the two had been able to purchase, it's almost like some people win the lottery and other people don't get help. And I think something with a more broadly dispersed positive impact for a number of people would be a more positive use of those funds. So, like Councilmember Williams, I would take that out. Also, the acquisition, rehabilitation, and resale. I remember a few years ago, there was an issue raised by some residents of the Douglas community about an acquisition, rehabilitation, and resale that impacted property valuations and property taxes in the Douglas community. And also, that's another one where, you know, for the person who gets that house, that's a huge benefit, but it's not a widely dispersed benefit. It's a huge benefit, you know, concentrated in a small number of people, and I'd like to help as many people as possible. So, like Councilmember Williams, I would take out those two things, the down payment assistance and the portion of the housing rehabilitation that relates to acquiring, rehabilitating, and reselling properties. I did have a question about, a follow-up question actually, about the homeowner repair assistance. I saw in the email that you sent that during the previous four years, we've had 96 home repair projects. 64 were emergency repairs, like HVAC, plumbing leak, hot water heater, at an average cost of $11,600. But there were 30 that were, that had, that were not emergency repairs and had an average cost of $79,300 each. And I was wondering, does that mean that in those 30 cases, the city paid the entire $79,300 to repair that house?
So, I think the, that was, that was the CDBG or home funds that were used to cover the costs of those.
And so, basically, so a homeowner who qualified based on income had CDBG or home funds paid for their repairs at an average of $79,300?
Correct.
And do we know anything about the values of those homes? Because that just seems like a really big number if, you know, if we're talking about, you know, assisting with, you know, needed repairs to help folks who don't have very much, you know, make ends meet.
And I don't have that information about the value of the homes, you know, and just some of the, at least the ones that I've been aware of, you know, a lot has to do with some of the cast iron pipes being replaced, some of the plumbing underneath the foundation, foundation issues, roof issues, window issues, that they met the qualifications. So, but I don't have, I don't have an overview of how much those homes were worth.
No, no worries. Thank you for that information. And then also, as I think Councilmember Prince was alluding to, there was mention of other services. Parks and senior centers were mentioned, and I understand from your responses to my email that CDBG funds, but not home funds, can be used on infrastructure and public facilities, but it's limited to areas that are income-qualified. And I was wondering two things. First, do we have areas in Plano that are income-qualified? I saw the map that you showed earlier. Is that basically how that would be determined? And also, would a senior center qualify because seniors are considered a special population?
So, I'm going to answer your first question. I think that if I have everything correct, the colored areas, either green, yellow, or gold, would qualify in this respect, and I'm going to check and see if I get a nod from my expert back there. And then the second question, does a senior center qualify as a special population? You're going to have to come down. I'm going to throw a lifeline for that answer, just so we can get you the correct information.
You're going to phone a friend.
I'm going to phone a friend.
Senior centers qualify as long as it's in those same colored areas. You'd have to income-qualify the area, so then you're not having to individually qualify everybody that comes to the senior center. So, those colored areas are the same for both situations that you've asked.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate that information. That's good to know. I didn't know if seniors being a special population, you know, qualified outside of those areas, so that's good to know. And then, just a couple other questions. I know that, you know, sometimes I hear people saying, you know, especially people who are aging and have children with cognitive impairments or other special needs, you know, that they're worried about what will happen to their adult children who still need that level of care when they pass, you know, when the parents pass. And as I understand it, you know, a group home could be a use of CBGD funds, CDBG funds that would qualify. Would we be able to transfer ownership of that to a group like, say, My Possibilities? And would we be able to do that within the plan as it's currently written?
That'll be another one, as far as seeing if the tax dollars can...
I'm sorry to keep putting y'all on the spot. Sorry about that.
No, it's fine. So, a public facility can be funded with CDBG funds only. And what that would mean is that an organization would come and say, we want to own that public facility. So, it would be, it would have to be open to that population. So, it's a little bit different normally when you're talking about group homes, that specific people go in there. But the transfer of ownership, the way it would work is because it's a public facility owned by a nonprofit, we would then allow them to build it, if that's the case. We would lean the property for a certain amount of years, and then it's owned by that nonprofit. The transfer of ownership, but it would have to be a public facility, which is a little bit different than when we start talking about group homes.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Well, thank you for that information. And so, anyway, with that, oh, and the last thing, I saw the mentions of the Day Resource Center in there, which I think is a great idea. I know that's something that the Collin County Homeless Coalition has talked about, and that it's eligible for those CDBG funds. I saw all of the mentions of the Day Resource Center in there, and I just wanted to make sure that that's something, if it comes to fruition during this five-year period, would that be included within this plan as it's currently written?
Yeah, that would be, if we had somebody come in and build it, this money could be used to fund it.
Okay, that's great to hear that that's currently included. So, I would support what Councilmember Williams said about taking out the, you know, the kind of acquiring, rehabilitating, and reselling houses, and also the down payment assistance, just because those provide such a large benefit for such a small number of people, but don't provide, you know, the broadly diffused benefit for the large population. you know, the broadly diffused benefit for the large population that needs help. You know, I, I prefer things that, that are broadly dispersed among those who, who, who need help in our community and, and help a greater number of people. And so I, I think that would be good. And then I'd also love to see us make sure that our plan is open to, you know, a, a potential senior center or park in those areas that qualify. And also the, the group home idea, you know, perhaps partnering with a group like My Possibilities to operate, you know, a facility that, that I guess it sounds like would be owned by the city. I, I think all of those would be positive to make sure our, our plan is open to that.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you all so much for your work.
Councilmember Smith.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. First off, I guess I'd like to add a, a third voice to the idea that we probably want to cut back or do away with the, the down payment assistance and otherwise there. One thing I didn't really hear a lot about, and, and I know it's part of it, we, we've always had a strong effort at homelessness prevention, and including utility assistance, things like that. What, what's happening to that in our, our five-year plan? Are we increasing tho- those funds availability? Perhaps, you know, if we do away with the down payment assistance programs, thing like that, we could apply that more for homelessness prevention, rather than dealing with those folks who do get evicted through issues that are beyond their ability to handle it by themselves. What, what are, what are we doing? What's our plan for that?
So, and, and I think that some of the homeless, homelessness prevention stuff, utility payments and that sort of thing, we have used other funding, CDBG, CV, coronavirus funds, some of those other funds for that sort of thing. And, and one of the things that, you know, we do have limits on what we can do. So, you know, because you're talking about public services. So public services are the smaller portion of this. And so we do use some of the, this funds for those sorts of things when we can, and, and will continue to do so.
Okay. Do, do we have an idea of what percentage or dollar amount? What, what, what have we done to increase that? Or is there a way to, do we even know that now, what our plan is for that?
You know, as far as, so in looking at, you know, because we talk about homelessness, homelessness prevention, right, and, and whether that's chronic homelessness, whether that's for special populations, so victims of domestic violence, youthful, youth, that sort of thing. So we do provide funding in various, various forms and fashion to, to those nonprofits that, that support those populations. I don't, I, I don't have that information for, for you right off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
Gotcha. Well, I appreciate all that you're actually, you know, does for us, Curtis. And I just wanted to be sure that some of these things don't get, you know, kind of dropped by the wayside. And, and I think reapplying funds, as we talked about, Councilman Williams, Councilman Rick Adeli, about doing away with the down payment, that we can reallocate hopefully some of the funds to be sure that we can give the maximum, you know, attention to those areas to keep people from becoming homeless in the first place. So, thanks.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So Mayor and Council, we intend to bring this back in April, I think it's the fourteenth?
Uh, yes, sir.
So bringing this back. So you actually have a little bit of time as well. I know that there's a lot of comments that have come, come through tonight. But if there's additional questions, again, the process is to make sure that we're making that informed decision and that we're, you know, capturing the, the spirit of the council direction within the plan to make sure that we're, we're fulfilling that. So you have a, a little bit of time actually between now and then. So I'd ask you, you know, if you do consider this further in the coming days or weeks, please make sure you forward your comments, and we'll try to make sure we include as many of those as possible in the plan.
All right.
Thank you, Curtis.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. Our next item is item six, discussion and direction regarding comments of public interest.
Mayor and Council, this was brought forward by two council members, so I'll turn it over to them to go ahead and make their comments.
Go ahead, Shelby.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we moved to Davis Library, we had a significant shakeup in our comments of public interest. We've been back in the council chambers for a while now. We had it first determined before we moved back from Davis that we would give it six months. But I think we've probably established everything we need to establish. I think there's significant value to citizens being able to have us as a captive audience during our traditional comments of public interest, and I would like to see it restored to how it used to be.
Okay. Any other comments? Casey? Sorry, hold on. There, go.
Thank you. I was the one who brought this on with Councilmember Williams, and I agree. I, I do think that, I, I don't think that we have a, in my opinion, a legitimate reason to withhold people from coming in person for comments of public interest when they're coming in for every other item. To me, it seems odd, a little silly. So I can't personally say to somebody if they came and asked me why we're doing that. I, I wouldn't be able to give them a, a reason that I felt really good about. So, to me, I think there's some good parameters that we would, we could discuss on here about putting time limits on it. And I would suggest that we do it, I would prefer doing it at this meeting, not doing, you know, I'm not going to be around here much longer, but I, I would suggest doing it at this meeting, because if I do want to come back and talk to y'all, I just want to do it at, at this meeting. I think it's odd to do it at another meeting. That would be my suggestion, not to have a separate meeting. I would do it at this meeting. And I, but I would suggest having a time limit similar to these others where they're allowing, capping people three minutes or five minutes. I think that that's very reasonable for us to not let people talk forever. So, those are my thoughts.
I'm sorry, I should also mention that having comments of public interest at the end of our meetings, while I understand the initial intent, it causes a burden on a lot of our citizens who have legitimate city business to say before us with the indefinite nature of our meetings.
Mayor Protem.
So I, I, while I agree with Casey that I think we probably should go back to in-person public comments, however, I would ask that we delay or table the remaining logistic of, you know, where we want the public comments to be, and how long, and, and what, what needs to happen regarding any changes to a later date. So I, I'm okay with, you know, going back to what it used to be in-person at this point, at the end of the meeting. But all the other changes, I, I would ask that we table that.
So you're, you're wanting to, we'll, we'll bring comments of public interest back, leave it at the end of the meeting, and then.
I, I would like to see.
Allow the new council to be able to decide where they want to put it on the agenda?
Exactly. I, I think it just, it's courtesy and respect for the new council when they do come in. They may have their own opinions, and I, I like to incorporate those when we, when we make our decision.
Councilmember Horn.
Thank you. I too agree that I'd like to see the public comment returned back in person, whether it's before or after the meeting. Again, I, I agree with Mayor Protem to let the new council vote on that. But if I do recall, we already had guardrails in place, such as time limits. But we also said that under development of those guardrails, that pretty much had to deal with city business. And that's kind of helped us with regards to managing, if you will, or at least having those guidelines ready for the people who want to present public comments, that, that this is what we want to hear too. So I think we have to be reminded that we did that, and we have those guardrails in place. But I'm in favor of bringing it back in person. And again, whether it's before or after, we could leave that to a vote with the new council. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree. I, I do think it's time to get back to having the comments of public interest up front. I, I agree with Mayor Protem that it's courtesy, let's wait till the new council is seated, let, let the, the full council then decide. But assuming that it does move forward, and we do go back to doing it in-person at the beginning of each meeting, you know, I, I would still like to be sure that the protocols that we put in place to read before the public comments are kept in place, and the, the, the rules and policies are written down as, as we have them previously, to be sure that everybody understands what we would expect from a professional standpoint for anyone who does address councils. So that's my thought.
The, go ahead. Anthony, you have a comment?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was just going to really quickly just, you know, say my two cents. I, I also agree that it's time for public comments to come back in person. And, you know, I, I personally agree with what Councilmember Prince said. I, I think it's good to have it at the regular meeting. As far as timing, you know, I, I'm fine with deferring that to the new council, because obviously I, I won't be here, and I recognize that whatever we do could be changed by a majority of the next council anyway. I would, however, encourage that new council to consider putting the comments of public interest at the beginning, just because we, we know that we're going to start the meeting at seven. And as Councilmember Williams alluded to, you know, we don't know when the meeting is going to end. So a lot of people, you know, who have jobs and maybe family responsibilities, it can, you know, the unpredictability of when comments of public interest might be when it's at the end, I think can, can be a burden to them. But I, I, I agree, we don't necessarily need to adopt a policy that, you know, a, a new council could just do something different anyway.
No, I, I appreciate that. I think I totally agree to, to have in-person comments of public interest. I think the one thing that, that we, we were trying to avoid was most of the time at our regular meeting, we have young scouts or girl scouts that, that are here. And historically, we've had some, some issues with, with that being, being a problem for younger kids being here during some antics that have occurred. So I'll be more than happy to, to place it wherever. We'll, we'll make it in person immediately. And we can decide on when, when to place it at the regular meeting, when the new council gets elected, if that's okay.
Just making sure I'm clear, Council. So it's back in person? Is it staying at the end of the meeting until the new council comes in to decide where to place it? Is, just checking to make sure.
Hold on. Shelby, you have a, a comment?
Yeah, on that, whether it's at the beginning or the end of the meeting, I, I strongly favor it being at the beginning of the meeting. And I don't necessarily think it's a discourtesy to the new council, because we'd be restoring it the way we found it. And the new council, I mean, we all understand the history here. The new council isn't necessarily. And if it's at the end of the meeting, when they come in, new council members aren't necessarily going to understand that, why it's at the end of the meeting, or have the context to want to move it back. I would see this as simply resetting it to the way we found it for the new council. Besides which, we're called to make numerous decisions before the new council comes in, instead of deferring it all to the new council.
I would say.
Casey, sorry.
Yeah, immediately, as in tonight, we can allow people to speak in person if they're here, right? If somebody signed up, I would like to see that. I, I would prefer for it to go to the beginning of the meeting. And then if it needs somebody, if there's a majority of us that want to do that, we move it to the beginning, because we think that's best for our citizens. If we want to bring that back to the council later, and that's not convenient for the council, then the new council can change it. We've changed this like fifteen times since I've been on council. So I don't think it's a big deal when the new council gets here, if a council member wants to bring it up again to, to change it again.
I don't care either way. I'm just trying to protect.
Yeah.
Some audience members that are here at the very beginning. That was, that was all I was trying to do. Go ahead.
Here's the thing. If, if we've already changed it many times, and at this point, it is at the end of the meeting, why are we changing it again? And we don't need to do that. I mean, we're still having in-person public comments. And there's a reason why it was moved to the end of the meeting in the first place. So, like I said, with respect to the new council coming in, and this time, we're going to have, you know, half of the, the council members who's going to be newly elected, I think it's just really good for everybody to, to gather all the comments and all the opinions and make the final decision of where the, the public comment should go. I don't think it's a big deal, but, you know, why, why change something that we've already put in place?
To me, it's not a decision about the, the council, whether we, like, we're here one way or the other to listen. It's, it's between the decision about what the mayor's saying. Is it best for everybody in the audience to hear if we have something? Or it's to what Councilmember Rick Adeli and Councilmember Williams are saying. Is it inconvenient for the people who have to sit till ten-thirty at night?
Right.
If they want to make it. And so to me, that's how I'm making the decision between those two.
I understand that. And my, my, what I'm saying is, there's a reason why it was moved from the beginning of the meeting to the end. And the reason, I believe, is valid. And that's the reason why it's at the end. So I don't want to be moving something that has already established as the rationale for having it at the end of the meeting. Until there's a new council, and they, you know, if they just, everybody outvotes me, that's fine. I believe that the, the, the public comments should go at the end of the meeting. That's my personal opinion. So that's the reason why I'm asking for it to stay. But, you know, if everybody wants to change, and I'm the minority, I'm okay with that, too.
Okay. So we, I think we're all in agreement to, to bring it back in person. Can we just do a vote? Or is that all right? Hand vote that everybody wants it at the beginning of the meeting? Raise your hand, please. Okay. Everybody that wants? Five? Okay. Motion passes five through.
One last question. Are we going to allow Zoom attendance, or is it just strictly in-person? Because one of the things that we shifted was that we, when it was on Zoom, it was everybody on Zoom. And now that we're in person, are we allowing people to go the other direction for, for that as well? So just seeking clarification.
Shelby.
I'm okay with allowing people the option, but with almost zero tolerance for getting the technology working. We chew up a lot of time with that.
Yeah.
I would allow both.
Yeah, there are, there are circumstances that, that, that we would allow. Anthony?
Oh, I was just going to say I would allow both. Absolutely.
Okay. All right. I think with that being said, I think we're, we're good to move on. Consent and regular agendas? Any item Councilmember would like to remove? Any items for discussion or future agendas? All right, we'll take a recess and return at seven o'clock. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Not that.
Okay, I've got it. I've got some, some cool things for you. So, you can either have one, one of these dog tags or you can have one of these, one of these from the fire department. Yeah. So, just, everybody just take one. Okay. Hey, guys. You're welcome. Which one? Well, you can kinda do this and kinda put it right there or something like that. You can put this around your wrist. Which one you want? Ah, I thought. Okay. Is that what you want? Okay. You guys? Come on in. Oh, you're welcome. Thank you guys for doing this. Put this around your mouth loop. Yeah, you're welcome. The parents want a picture. Yeah, we're gonna take a picture. Does everybody get one? Did you? Everybody get one? Okay. All right. Okay, come here. Everybody, everybody get in tight so we can all be in the picture. You guys were great. There you go. Okay, now, wait, wait. Let, let moms and dads take picture. All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. So, we do have one proclamation. Uh, we prepared a proclamation to recognize that March is American Red Cross Month. And I'd like to call forward Ted Stafford, American Red Cross DFW Metro East Chapter Board Member, and Dodge Prince with the Red Cross Volunteer. So, I'd like to, uh, read the proclamation and present it to you. Um, so, American Red Cross Month, whereas each March, the American Red Cross recognizes the compassion of people nationwide and celebrates their commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. This annual tradition has occurred since nineteen forty-three. And whereas the Red Cross collected more than seventy-six hundred units of blood at blood drives and the Red Cross Blood and Platelet Donation Center in Plano, ensuring new moms, cancer patients, accident victims have access to safe life-saving and blood. And whereas in two thousand twenty-four, the Red Cross proudly provided nearly a hundred services to Plano military members, veterans, their families, and caregivers to cope with the challenges of service, and more than sixty-six hundred people were enrolled in Red Cross First Aid, CPR, and AED training courses, helping to make Plano more prepared and resilient in emergencies. Now, therefore, I John Muns, Mayor of the City of Plano, Texas, do hereby proclaim March two thousand twenty-five as American Red Cross Month in the City of Plano and encourage all residents to join me and the Plano City Council in supporting this humanitarian mission. Thank you, Ted, and congratulations. Thank you so much for all you do. I'll let you say a couple of comments if you'd like.
On behalf of the American Red Cross, I wanna thank Mayor Muns and the entire city council and all of our city agencies for working together to make the Plano area a more safe, resilient, and effective community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's go, let's come here and, uh, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Moving on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
Mayor motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? It was Maria. Please vote.
Would you vote?
Oh.
I vote yes.
Okay, all right. I was waiting. Thank you. Motion passes eight to zero. Next item?
It would be comments of public interest and we do not have any speakers this evening.
All right. Yeah. There being no further business, we are adjourned.
Parts to absorb the water is typically sufficient. Excess watering can lead to flushing of vital nutrients from the soil. While responsible hand-watering is allowed on non-watering days, it's important to do so mindfully. Sweep driveways and patios rather than spraying them down. Ensure hose faucets are turned off after use and regularly check for faucet, hose, and sprayer leaks. Thanks for watching. Visit livgreeninplano.com.